All right, ladies and gentlemen. First of all, I want to make sure everybody can hear me in the back. If you can't, just sort of do some kind of motion, let me know. We want to welcome you on behalf of Herald Mail Media and Antietam Cable. Thank you for joining us here at the Board of Education Candidates Forum this evening. I'm Michelle Hurst. The school system has generously offered the use of its facilities this evening. But please note, that doesn't constitute any sort of endorsement by the school system itself. Tonight, we're going to welcome six of the seven candidates who are vying for the four open seats on the Washington County Board of Education. We're going to hear opening remarks from each of them in just a moment. But for now, let's take a moment to meet them. They're seated in alphabetical order. First, we have Mr. Peter Bickford and Ms. Donna Brightman, Mr. Al Martin, Mr. Wayne Ridenhour, Mr. Stan Stauffer, and Mrs. Melissa Williams. The remaining candidates for the Board of Education, Lynda Murray is now going to be joining us this evening. So before we start, I want to go over some rules for you, the audience. Of course, the first one, you can probably guess, and I'm going to make sure I did the same thing. Turn off your cell phones, put them on silent. Beyond that, the most important thing for you to do this evening is ask questions. So when you enter the auditorium, a volunteer from Herald Mail Media would have been handing out note cards and pencils. Hopefully, everyone got one of those. Write your question down, raise your hand when you're ready to have it answered, or when you're ready to submit it, excuse me. Our volunteers are going to be reviewing the questions to avoid any redundancies or personal attacks. We're not going to do that this evening. This also serves as a way for us to get a wide variety of questions answered, too. Also note, you can't ask a specific question to a specific candidate. Now for the candidates, I have some directions for you. Please keep your eyes on our volunteer timekeeper. She has three folders to signal your time. Green, of course, means that it has started. Thank you, Kelly. Yellow means you have 15 seconds left. And then, at that point, we ask that you wrap up your thought. Red, of course, signals it's time to stop. I will let you finish your thought, but of course, for the sake of time and questions, I'll be very politely interrupting everyone. Of course, we all watched the presidential debate the other night, so none of that. We're going to have a great time this evening. It's also important that everyone remains seated, candidates, that is, that all the candidates remain seated this evening. So now, a couple more notes. You're going to have one minute to answer all the questions. You're also going to have one minute to make your opening statements. Following that, we'll have about 18 rounds of questions. We have three candidates answering the same question in the majority of the rounds. Everyone will have nine questions total to answer. So if everyone is ready, audience is ready, we're going to go ahead and begin with our opening remarks. We're going to go in alphabetical order. So, Mr. Bickford, we're going to begin with you.
All right. Thank you very much, and thank you to all the people. It's great to see a crowded room here this evening. My name is Peter Bickford, and this is a very surreal experience for me, because if any of you know me, you know I've been a journalist for most of my life. So I'm used to asking the questions and not being here answering them. As a matter of fact, I think a year and a half ago, if you asked me if I would be in this position, I probably would have laughed and said, "No way." But several people approached me, and were looking for candidates to run for school board, and I gave it some thought, as anybody, I'm sure, up here has. It's a big leap to take. But I realized that, as a parent, I had basically just survived being a parent of a high school student who's now graduated. I wanted to get involved in the Board of Education, and this seemed like a perfect opportunity to do so. I've been involved with many organizations that have improved our community, the most recent being I'm on the Board of Directors for the Maryland Symphony Orchestra. I also was part of the board, the foundation, that started the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts. So it is a passion of mine to be involved with positive things like the Board of Education. So I'm happy to be a candidate, happy to be here tonight and answering your questions.
All right. And Ms. Brightman?
Thank you. Good evening to everyone, and thank you for being here. You know, there's a reason that the Board of Education members are nonpartisan and have no taxing authority, and that's so we can focus on the quality of life and instruction and education for our students. Public education is the very center of this community, and should never be divided by Democrat or Republican, black or white, rich or poor, urban or rural. Washington County is hungry for leaders who work together to produce effective and efficient public policy. Having the right people with the right skills and mindset and the right positions of public service matters, and I would tell you that this election matters. Thank you.
And Mr. Martin?
Good evening. Thank you all very much for coming out, and thank you, Herald Mail and Antietam Cable, for hosting this evening. I'm Al Martin. I am also running for the Board of Education. This is my first time running for an elected office, either here or in my 32-plus years experience with both the town of Hancock as their town manager, and then 30 years with the city of Hagerstown. I am very pleased to be able to serve in this capacity. I'm involved in a number of nonprofit boards, including the art museum, the library, the tourism bureau, the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts. And one of the things that I have prided myself on my time as a staff person with the city and in my volunteer service since I retired five years ago, is the ability to get things done. We do that together as a team. We bring people together in consensus with a common, shared vision and agenda. So I look forward to being on the school board and bringing some financial expertise, something that I don't think we have right now on the board.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Ridenhour?
Thank you. Thank you for everybody that's here. Thank you from the Herald Mail or to the Herald Mail for putting this together. As is typical for me, I'm scared to death, even after doing this for several years. I would like to, just a little background, I am a retired teacher, 30 years in the classroom, but currently am working as a certified residential real estate appraiser in the state of Maryland. I am the senior member of this board at this point in time. Some term I don't like to apply to myself too much, but I have to do it anyway. And it has been an honor. It's been an honor to be a part of the Board of Education, to serve our students, to serve our children with this job. I take it seriously, and will do my best to answer your questions, and if I'm on the board again, to be prepared to serve our citizens and students each and every meeting.
Thank you. And Mr. Stauffer?
Thank you all for coming. Welcome to tonight's forum. I am Stan Stauffer. For 42 years, I served Washington County Public Schools as an educator, classroom teacher for 37 of those years. I was a coach for 27 years. I was an athletic director for five. My teaching career began in 1970 after I was discharged from the United States Army. I'm proud to say I served in the Army Infantry in Vietnam. As a retired educator, I didn't lose my interest in education when I retired, and I told that to the retired administrators several weeks ago, because they asked me why I was running. And I said, "Well, like you folks here," meaning the retired administrators, "you obviously didn't lose your interest in education when you retired, or you wouldn't be interviewing people for the school board." So tonight, I speak to you as a proud candidate for the Board of Education, and I will tell you this, I think I have the time, I have the energy, and I have some knowledge to be a responsible and successful board member. And quite frankly, what I don't know about, if I get on the board, and I hope I do, I will study and learn about, because I can ask questions, and I'll ask them.
All right. Thank you. And Mrs. Williams?
Yes. Good evening. Thank you, Herald Mail, and thank you all for being here this evening. I'm running for reelection to your school board. I have 35 years' experience as an educator in schools all across our county, and now I have four years of experience as a board member. I'd like to use all the knowledge, skills, and experience I've gained over the last 39 years to continue serving the students of Washington County, their parents, teachers, and the taxpayers of Washington County on your school board. I'm proud of the accomplishments of our school system over the last four years, and I'm proud of the part that I've played in those accomplishments. I believe that my questions, my contributions during discussions, my committee service, work in Annapolis, and yes, even my occasional no votes, have helped make those accomplishments not only possible, but better than originally proposed. I'm running for reelection to your school board. Should I be reelected, I'll continue to listen to you, work for you, and answer to you. If you'd like to know more about my experience and my personal background, I hope that you'll contact me and visit my website at electmelissawilliams.com.
All right. And thank you to all of the candidates. We are going to start out with a question for everyone, beginning this time around with Ms. Brightman. The question is, what is the right balance between teaching students modern technology and also ensuring that they are competent in the fundamental three Rs?
Well, I think our Maryland college and career standards and our essential curriculum that our teaching staff from around the county have worked on for the last three years will cover both of those ends of the spectrum. Also, we're looking at career technology as an important aspect going forward. Again, it really, 21st century education is not about a one-size-fits-all or a one-pathway to success. Career technology is something that gives children a lot of opportunity, whether that's a college education, whether that's a certification, whether that's a badge, whether someone owns their own company. You can be a traditionalist, or you can be a non-traditionalist. And again, we need to build a strong foundation of literacy and numeracy in the earlier years in elementary school, and then as we work up through the secondary classes, we need to be able to give students as many different opportunities and experiences so they can go out into the world. And technology is a huge part of the world, 21st century world.
Okay. Thank you. And Mr. Martin?
We need to do both. My wife is a Head Start preschool teacher in Berkeley County in Martinsburg, just to the south of us. And quite frankly, the three Rs are critically important. If people can't read, if they can't write and express themselves well, if they don't understand arithmetic and calculations, they're at a severe disadvantage. Reading is perhaps the biggest fundamental, and getting kids started early on the right track is extremely important. I think technology is something that should be embedded in the learning process of learning the three Rs. Today, we look at how students are learning, and it's not the same way we were taught. I remember chalk and blackboards. I remember mimeographs. Technology has enhanced and provided new tools that we need to use in our system, and we need to be making sure that our teachers and staff have the right tools, the right support, the right training. And I think technology will also enable our teachers to reduce their workload once it's implemented properly.
Okay. Thank you. And now the question goes to Mr. Ridenhour.
Thank you. Yes. I don't believe that they have to be independent. I think they need to be, as Mr. Martin and Mrs. Brightman have mentioned, they need to be working together. Technology can be very important in helping some students find their way with the three Rs, as they're stated. Tech can improve those things, and vice versa. It's a matter of how it's utilized and how it's embedded in the curriculum. Things have changed, folks. You know, we look back sometimes with rose-colored glasses, believing that the good old days are the way that we should go. But the good old days are gone. Things have changed, and they're changing rapidly. You know, your telephone or your cellphone is out of date in a year. So it's no different than anything else. It's necessary to continue to change, and that's how, you know, our tech program and other elements that we've embedded into our curriculum are going to help our kids in the long run.
Okay. And Mr. Stauffer?
Well, technology is a tool, and it has a place in the classroom. What I don't want to see is a kid with their head stuck in an iPad or a computer all day long. I don't think that having computers and iPads is necessarily going to lead to better reading ability. I believe that a kid who struggles with reading comprehension is not going to become a better reader with just using an iPad. Also, I think there's another factor here, depends on the quality and the expertise of our teachers and so forth. And I trust them to come up with ideas, to implement the curriculum that we have in the county, and do a good job with it.
Okay. Thank you. And Mrs. Williams?
Yes. I think the critical question there is, what is the right balance? And we're in new territory, and I don't think we know what that balance is. What I think is important is that we strike that balance, and I trust that our teachers will be using technology as a tool, and eventually, through research and experience with the technology, delivering the curriculum, will come to understand what the right balance is. I think right now, student engagement is high because having the technology so readily available to the students. But, you know, we need to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our students. Students come to us with different strengths, and they learn through different modalities. So I don't think technology is the end-all by any means, but it certainly is an important part of education today.
Okay. Thank you. And wrapping up round one, we go back to Mr. Bickford.
When you asked the question, it made me think of my time back at Western Heights Middle School, when we got a first, I think it was Apple IIc, and we were so excited to have a computer. So one of the reasons I decided to run was because I was so proud of our school board for passing the iPad initiative. I think it's very exciting that most of our students in this county have an iPad. I agree, you have to find a balance. I think they're in the process of finding that balance. One of the things that excites me about the technology that's being used today is students learn in different ways, and teachers can adapt to those students using the tools like an iPad. The one traditional thing that I think that has gone by the wayside, I think it's making a return, but I know my daughter graduated never having learned cursive, and I'm embarrassed by her signature because of it. So one traditional thing that I would like to see returned to the curriculum is learning cursive, and I think that's happening now.
Okay. Thank you. That wraps up our first round. So we're moving on to response round two, and moving into our three candidate groupings. So this question, excuse me, is going to Mr. Martin, Mr. Ridenhour, and Mr. Stauffer. So starting with Mr. Martin. What will you do to promote courteous and considerate behavior and lessen contention on the board?
Well, a board does not work effectively if it's not operating as a team. The interesting thing about, say, an evolutionary board, as most of our private nonprofit boards are, and an elected board, is that the process is more democratic. You never know who you're going to be with through an electorate vote. The citizens I consider to be are shareholders, and who they elect really are their chosen representatives. So it's up to the board to figure out, how do we work together? How do we bring ourselves together, develop a common, shared, collective vision? And I think part of that, if we have some dysfunction in that, we need to be talking with facilitators. We need to be getting together and building a relationship. We need to, we're all here because we are looking out for the best thing for our students and our community, and it's up to us as adults and professionals to find that balance and to work together for the common community good.
Okay. Thank you. The question goes to you, Mr. Ridenhour.
Thank you. Yes. I think the interesting thing, heard a lot about this, we've read a lot about it. The interesting thing is, over 93% of our votes are either unanimous, or, and this is in 12 years, either unanimous or supermajority, which means 5-2-6-1. So 93% of the time, we agree pretty easily. The bottom line is, in a democracy, and this is kind of a direct democracy, when you vote, it's either going to be 7-0, 6-1, 5-2, 4-3. What has to happen in order to make the group functional and cooperative is, we've got to be careful that when we do disagree, that we're not unpleasant about it. Make the vote, make your point, make your position known, and then move on. If you don't like it, the end or the response, try to change somebody's mind.
Thank you. And Mr. Stauffer?
Well, collaboration is a reciprocal process. It has to come from both sides. I will answer this very briefly. If elected to the board, one of the things that I won't do is question the motives of those who disagree, you know, with my opinion, and vote a different way and so forth. So I think that's the simplest way to answer it. I spent 42 years in the school system. I worked with probably 10 different principals, knew about 17 different vice principals, four or five social studies supervisors, and so forth, and always got along with all of them. Whether I disagreed with them, or agreed with them or not, it didn't matter. Once the discussion had been held, we moved on, and we forgot about it.
Okay. Thank you very much. I should mention that with the exception of the first question, all of these so far have been from our audience. Response round three goes to Mrs. Williams, Mr. Bickford, and Ms. Brightman, and we're going to begin with Mrs. Williams. This is actually a two-part question. In researching and reading about new ideas for education, what idea excites you for the students of Washington County, and what new idea would you like to see the school board explore?
Oh, wow. That's a very interesting question. I think right now, we have made a commitment to technology in a big way. I would like to see us explore ways to utilize that technology in the best possible way to increase student achievement. So that would have to be my answer this time.
Okay. Thank you. And now we go back around to Mr. Bickford.
I agree with Mrs. Williams. One of the things that really excites me is the idea of personalized learning. There's programs, many of you may have heard of Khan Academy, where somebody can go online using their iPad, using a computer, and they get tested, and their skills are shown to the teacher based on the test as they go. So a teacher can adapt their learning based on how the students performed on these different quizzes. Some students may need to go back and work on a skill, and that becomes obvious because of how they did their various lesson plans. That's personalized learning. It's one way to adapt, the teachers can adapt their teaching skills to address all the students in their classroom. So that's one of the things that I'd really like to explore, how we can use our iPads, how we can use this new technology to make it easier to fit all the needs of all the students and their different learning abilities.
And Ms. Brightman?
A minute won't even come close to what I'd like to say, but there's several things that I think that excite me, is the idea is, education is no longer linear, and it shouldn't be, if someone in the third grade is doing seventh-grade math, they should be allowed to move forward at their own pace. Technology allows that customization and individualization of instruction. I would say we need to eliminate department heads on how you define math, science, history, English. I think for science, why do we teach science in isolation? The world doesn't approach science by biology, chemistry, physics. It's all wrapped together. It's always very cohesive. And again, the whole idea of seat time versus competency and mastery, I think those are the two items that are more important. You shouldn't force a child to sit in a seat when they've already mastered the subject. Thank you.
Thank you. So response round four is going to be for Mr. Ridenhour, Mr. Stauffer, and Mrs. Williams. This question, we're going to begin with Mr. Ridenhour. Many technology advocates are pushing educators toward a paperless classroom. What are your thoughts on this, and is it something which Washington County should be pushing?
I'm not necessarily sure that we will get to paperless in the near future. I think it's a possibility, obviously. I believe we've got to be sure before we take that route, that all of our people are comfortable utilizing the technology that we're going to give them. And we also have to be certain that the technology we're providing is appropriate for, you know, that particular group. One of the reasons that I supported the first technology plan was because the manner in which it was set up allowed the high school students not to have iPads, but to have devices that are going to be closer to what they will be using in college and in the real world, you know, the Air Max and other materials. So paperless, I think at some point in time, it may happen. I think that's still a little, it's still a ways away.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Stauffer?
Well, I agree with Mr. Ridenhour on the one point that I don't know if that's going to come about or not. What worries me about going to a paperless classroom and just having technology, I've often thought, what happens when the technology goes down, when the system goes down? The teacher better be able to teach the lesson, and students better have resources with which they can work. Also, we've got to remember that not all students are going to adapt to technology, especially in the testing area. I think there should be a paper and pencil choice, for example, to take the PARC exam, because I think that hinders the test scores, because some kids, I think, are not proficient in the use of the computer, and have to, how shall I say it, should have that choice. I know when we gave the high school assessments, if you couldn't read, you had a reader for the government high school assessment. Well, there ought to be a choice on the PARC test also.
Thank you. And Mrs. Williams?
I think if there is to be a paperless classroom, that it's some time away in the distant future. As we've noted, that students learn through different modalities, and I think there's a great deal of research that needs to be done before we fully understand the effect that some of the technology will have on our learners. You know, there's a lot of discussion about the amount of screen time and what looking at screens can do to children as they're developing. I think that there is just so much out there unknown, and that research will eventually tell us as to the true benefits of going entirely away from paper and using technology for the things that traditionally have been done with paper and pencil.
All right. Thank you. We are now moving to response round five. These questions are for Mr. Bickford, Ms. Brightman, and Mr. Martin, beginning with Mr. Bickford. How do you feel about standardized testing? What other tools can or should Washington County use to assess students' needs and skills?
I'm not a fan of standardized testing, as I just recently answered in one of our questionnaires. I know that we are under an obligation from state regulators to hold standardized testing. And when I'm just out there on the campaign trail hearing from people, it's one of the bigger frustrations for not only parents and students, but also teachers. I understand that you need standardized testing to compare us, and it's one way to arrange for funding from the government. But you need to let teachers teach, and too much of our time is being taken up by standardized testing. So what I would do, one of the things that I'm pleased with is that they've adapted PARC. Originally, it was going to be, they took PARC at the beginning of the year, and then took it at the end of the year, and that got to be very complicated and also messed up schedules. And so now they've changed that, so it would be at the end of the year. So I'm glad to see that. I think let teachers teach. I mean, teachers know what's going to be best for their students. So that's a simple way to answer an alternative. But right now, we have to do PARC. We're under obligation, so we have to live with it and try to make it, just support teachers as much as we can.
Thank you. Ms. Brightman?
Thank you. I think it's important to understand that PARC is more of an accountability tool for the system, not for students. And we have an obligation to And we have an obligation to have incremental feedback, immediate feedback, in a formative way. And we do that in all of our classrooms. We have map testing, we have benchmarking, things that can touch the student immediately and allow the teacher to give the immediate feedback that that student needs to form an instructional plan for that student. The Park test is really not about students, as far as I'm concerned, because we receive that information back when it's too late to really affect any possible intervention or what we do as far as assisting that student. So testing, I think, is really no longer a big issue for us here, because we're using some rationale that we're putting the students first and testing second.
Thank you. Mr. Martin?
I'm a believer in helping students succeed. I think, as Ms. Brightman said, these tests really are more about assessing how the district is doing in their performance. To me, we should be testing how the students are doing individually. I find far more value in skills testing, whether it be technical or apprenticeship skills for our trade folks or our folks in the farming community, whether it be SAT or ACT scores of how individual students are doing. Learning really is an individual thing. The way we deliver that is in a group setting in the school system. But I think with the increased use of technology, teachers will be able to focus more on individuals to help make sure they're getting it and having, if they're having trouble with specific things, that they're being successful in those elements. And I think we need to focus on student and individual success more so than system success. The system's success will come with that individual's success, not on standardized test.
Thank you. We're now moving on to response round six. This question goes to Mr. Stauffer, Mrs. Williams, and Mr. Bickford. Beginning with you, Mr. Stauffer. Washington County has one of the highest child poverty rates in the state. What should we do to help children in poverty overcome the obstacles to learning readiness and compete with children from higher readiness environments?
Well, one of the things that I think that works is getting to children at an early Pre-K, but you need funding for that, kindergarten. And I would say this also, I think perhaps we need to look at class sizes. That could be helpful in helping these children. Class sizes should be reduced where possible in grades, kindergarten through third grade. The problem is, when you start reducing class size, that means adding teachers, that takes funding, but you also have to place for, have to have a place for them to teach. Studies show that if you get the class size down below 20, students do better. But again, lack of classroom space. So do you go to maybe to a 30 to 2 ratio, where you have two teachers in the same classroom? And how would that work out? You've got to get that, those basics led or started down early.
Okay. Thank you. And Mrs. Williams?
I think utilizing Title I dollars, really maximizing the funds that are provided to us federally. I think by providing parent liaisons in our Title I schools, I think we need to be doing a lot of work with parents and parent involvement, and also exploring wraparound services for these students and making sure that we have community involvement in supporting these students. Mr. Stauffer mentioned pre-K. I think it's critical that we expand our pre-K services to make it possible for more students who are coming from impoverished situations to be able to participate.
Thank you. Mr. Bickford?
Yeah, it was, it was a sad day when you picked up the newspaper and saw that our scores were one of the lowest in the state when it comes to kindergarten readiness. Kids in pre-K weren't prepared for kindergarten. But I think the positive of that, the benefit of that, is it brought that issue to light. And now we've got several projects underway. Bester Community of Hope, I don't know if you've heard about this, but this is an organized effort to really target one of those Title I schools. And many churches are now involved. I know my church is having a parenting night where they're inviting, a parenting party. They're inviting parents in, they're providing childcare, and they're passing on different ways that parents can teach their children at home. So I'm excited to see that this problem's being tackled. I think you're going to see those scores improve in the coming years. So I'm optimistic.
Thank you. Response round seven, these questions, excuse me, are for Ms. Brightman, Mr. Martin, and Mr. Ridenhour. Beginning with Ms. Brightman. Many students are hungry on the weekends and holidays. What can the school system do to address this problem?
The school system has been aware of this problem for some time, as is the community. And the community has responded with something like the MICA backpack, which has been very effective. Our food services department has put together a summer food truck that goes out into the communities all summer long and often on weekends or holidays. I mean, when you have 11,000 children living at some level of poverty, and we have pockets of concentration of poverty in certain rural and urban areas, hunger is not just a figment of our imagination. We have children who leave on Friday afternoon and aren't sure of where their food is coming from until the next Monday morning. So we're doing a lot of breakfast, we're doing a lot of grab and go, we're doing farm-to-school food. Again, the truck out in the communities. There's more to be done, but this is definitely part of the poverty issue that we need to wrap ourselves around.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Martin?
Poverty and hunger in our community is a very serious problem. We have a significant amount of our population that is below the average income levels, and our kids are challenged by that. It's very difficult to learn if you aren't, if you're hungry and if you're not mentally prepared. I am involved with several organizations that hopefully have helped do something about that. I know when I was city finance director in the summertime for our summer playground programs, we worked with the state and the schools in funding a meal program, where basically the state and the city partnered to ensure that there was nutritious food at these playgrounds for lunch. Commission on Aging, that I'm treasurer and secretary of, we provide Meals on Wheels, and we provide non-perishable food to go with seniors on the days that they're not getting a fresh meal. Things like that can be done, and I think it's something that we need to look at and look to see what grant programs are out there to help support some of these initiatives.
Thank you. And to Mr. Ridenhour?
Thank you. Yes. Mrs. Brightman mentioned, because these are programs that we already have in place, so I'm familiar with some of them. The MICA backpack, the food truck, and other programs are good programs. The problem is, we need more. And we need more not just from the schools, but also from the community, as Mr. Martin was alluding to. We have, you would be surprised how many homeless students we have in Washington County schools, how many transient students we have who go from one school to another, and we don't know where they are. We don't even know their address on some occasions. You know, we've got to stay on top of that. My wife told me yesterday about a student that she had recently who was homeless for a year, jumping from shelter to shelter to shelter while his mother was trying to finish school. You know, those types of students are hard, a lot of times, to keep track of. So we've got to be vigilant on that and do our very best to make certain that those students are provided for as best we can provide for them.
Thank you very much. We're moving on to response round eight. This question is for Mrs. Williams, Mr. Bickford, and Ms. Brightman. Beginning with Mrs. Williams. Positive collaborative relationships between the school board and employee groups are essential while developing policy, curricula, and contracts. What is your plan to establish, improve, and/or maintain lines of communication with employee groups?
Well, I think that it's very important that the board be open to working as a collaborative partner with our employee groups. I think there is much to be learned, I think, in terms of solving problems of the system from the employee groups. They have ideas, they have solutions and suggestions for ways that we can be continuously improving. And so hopefully, the new composition of the board will be more open to working collaboratively as partners with our teachers and with our support staff.
Thank you. Moving to Mr. Bickford.
I agree. I think that, you know, one of the nice parts about having employee groups is they're going, you can go to them to find out what the issues are. They've gone out, they've done the work of surveying their members, and they come back with the issues, and then we tackle them. So I think you continue to keep that line of communications. It's crucial to what we do as a board and what they do as professionals.
Thank you. And Ms. Brightman?
Yeah, absolutely. I would think the key to collaboration really begins with trust. And there seems to have been a lot of trust broken between WCTA and board members and staff and negotiations. And I think it's difficult to know how to regain that trust. And when a board member takes a risk to reach out and then gets slapped down, the trust even goes further and further away. So we do have some issues with trust, and I would say that goes on both sides. So as part of a first step opportunity here tonight, I would like to see WCTA release the Endorsey's questionnaires that they have locked up in their office and did not send out to their entire membership. I think that would be a great first step in re-establishing trust so that everyone in the county could see what those questionnaires had on them. Thank you.
Thank you. Response round nine to Mr. Martin, Mr. Ridenhour, and Mr. Stauffer. This question also deals with the Teachers Association. Do you agree with WCTA to support the quote "fair share"? If elected, will you agree to support and vote for fair share? And just to note, fair share means mandatory payment of dues for all teachers. Mr. Martin, we begin with you.
Well, that's an interesting question. I will tell you that in my role with the city, we worked with four different unions. We had great relations with those unions. And there, the expectation in that environment was that everyone needed to join the union if you were part of the bargaining group. I'm assuming that is not the case here in Washington County. If it isn't, then I think that's something that needs to be looked at there. I'm not sure what the state laws are on that, but to me, if everyone is being represented by a given group, they should be paying their share of that to make sure that the cost is shared equitably among all the members. If you're not represented by that group, then you shouldn't be forced to pay dues to that group.
Thank you. Mr. Ridenhour?
Well, the short answer is no. I do not support that. I do support the right of WCTA, the association, to bargain for members or for the teachers' group. I do not believe it is the responsibility or, I do not believe that teachers should have to make a choice and have to pay if they don't desire to pay. You know, my, when I was a member of WCTA and when I was a teacher, I always believed that if the association was doing a good job, teachers would join because they wanted to join. And that's the way it should be. I don't believe it should be forced down anybody's throat that they have to join the association.
Thank you. And Mr. Stauffer?
Well, there's a rumor going around that, and I'll address this. There's a rumor trying to be circulated in the community that I and some other people made a deal, if elected, to vote this in. That is categorically false. No deal was ever reached like that. Having said that, I will tell you this. I was a member of the associations for 42 years, and I was an association rep. I don't use the term "union" because it's not a union. You can't strike, and you don't have to join. So it's not a union. If it were a union, you'd be forced to join. But I will tell you this, in my experience as a faculty rep for many years, as a member of the Board of Directors and so forth, one of the problems that I had was the fact that the people who complained the most when something happened were those people who did not belong. And their response always was, what's the association going to do about this? And I always had a problem with that. So I agree with Mr. Martin. It's something we have to look at. I make no promises about it. If you're getting benefits from the association, then maybe you should pay something towards the expense that goes into the negotiations and everything. Everyone is represented by the collective bargaining agreement, everybody, whether you're a member or not.
Okay. Thank you. And moving on to response round 10, I will ask one quick favor of our wonderful timekeeper, Kelly. If their time is up, will you just hold that up a little bit longer in case I miss it out of, I have bad peripheral vision, we'll say that. Okay, so response round 10 goes to Mr. Ridenhour, Mr. Stauffer, and Mrs. Williams. Let's see. Do you think, we're going to begin with Mr. Ridenhour. Do you think the school calendar should start after Labor Day and end by June 15? If you agree, why? If you disagree, how do you propose the school system work with Governor Larry Hogan and state officials on the matter?
The bottom line is, the governor has made a decision, you know, at this point in time, we don't have a choice. My only problem, the big problem that I have with this, is that in my opinion, this is a decision that's best left to the local jurisdiction. That being said, I am perfectly confident that our calendar committee and the board will come up with a calendar that works. There are some things that I'm concerned about. I think if, you know, as we look at the proposed calendar, you're going to have a very, very long time with very, very few breaks from December, or, excuse me, from January 1 until the end of the school year. And I think kids are going to burn out, they're going to be tired, as are teachers. So it's, you know, it is what it is. You know, I'm not going to argue with the governor. You know, I respect his position, I respect what he's thinking, that this could be an economic benefit for the state. If that is the case, Governor, we'll be glad to take some of the profits that you get out of starting after Labor Day. We'd be more than happy to take a few dollars of that.
Thank you. Mr. Stauffer?
I'm not opposed to starting school after Labor Day. This year, school started way too early. It started, I think it was August 17, somewhere in that neighborhood. Teachers were back like August 11 and so forth. I do regret two things. One, the loss of local control in determining the calendar. And the other thing I regret, I don't regret it, but I don't want to see our students placed in a disadvantageous situation concerning state assessments, concerning advanced placement tests which are going to take place beginning early in May, regardless of when we start school. So I think it can be handled favorably, and I think the calendar committee will come up with a reasonable solution to it.
Thank you. Mrs. Williams?
Yes, I have no strong preference one way or the other, whether the start to the year is before or after Labor Day. I do agree that the decision is best made locally, and I regret that things kind of played out the way they did, but I think that's the governor's decision, and unless that decision is overridden by the courts or whatever, however that plays out, I think we do what we can to make the calendar the best possible calendar it can be to serve our community and to serve our system. As far as the economic benefit, I don't think you make a decision based on economics when you're talking about students. I think we make decisions based upon what's best for our kids, not what's best for the economy, so.
Thank you. We're moving now to response round 11 for Mr. Bickford, Ms. Brightman, and Mr. Martin. Beginning with you, Mr. Bickford. What more could the school board do legally to create a more culturally diverse workforce?
Well, that's a tough one because they're doing so much already. I've attended some diversity task force meetings to try to get my head around the issue because I want to see a more diverse population, more diverse teachers in the classroom. I know that they are, there are teams of people that go on recruiting drives. They drive long distances to try to recruit to this area, and they say sometimes people walk right by the table because they don't know where Washington County is. They think it's not near a big city, so they don't want to necessarily be out in Western Maryland. Where's Western Maryland? I think we need to do a better PR job of getting it out there. What a great county we live in. What are some of the exciting things happening here? Every student from third grade up has iPads. I think a teacher's going to be excited by that. You can come here and, you know, you're close to a big city, and yet you get to live out in the beautiful mountains. So there's lots of things we, I guess the other thing we can do is just continue to push the economic benefits and to living in our community.
Thank you. And Ms. Brightman.
Thank you. This is, again, one of those tough questions. I think the way I look at it, it's not just a K to 12 issue. This isn't just happening in a vacuum in Washington County school system. It's actually an issue throughout the country. Teaching colleges and universities are not graduating as many teachers overall, much less teaching candidates of diverse background. Also, we just set up today in Policy Committee an opportunity for an ad hoc committee that would look at this issue very holistically and have people from every walk of life here in the county, whether that's Meredith's Hospital, HCC, county officials, people from housing and transportation. This is not just an education issue. This is a much broader issue of diversity throughout our entire county.
Thank you. Mr. Martin?
Our workforce should reflect the diversity of the community that it serves. We're very fortunate here in Washington County. We have a wonderful opportunity. We live in a great community. I know I have chosen to stay here five years into retirement and have no desire to go anyplace else. The mountains are close by, wonderful national parks, a wonderful quality of life. We're close to two major metropolitan areas, but far enough away that we're not immediately impacted by some of their problems, but we have the amenities there. We have our own amenities. Quite frankly, I think we need to look at recruiting and bringing people here. We have a wonderful story, and I think we just need to be focused on that as a goal, and it will happen. It needs to be a priority, and I think we can get there. We will get there.
Thank you very much. We're moving now to response round 12. This includes Stan Stauffer, Melissa Williams, and Peter Bickford. We're going to begin with Mr. Stauffer. The question is, how do you plan to support small learning communities and create more opportunities for specialized learning?
Would you repeat that, please?
Sure.
Remember what we talked about beforehand.
How do you plan to support small learning communities and create more opportunities for specialized learning?
Well, I would answer that this way. You can create small learning communities by decreasing class size. That's something that needs to be dealt with. Personally, to do that, I think the whole state should look at that. There should be some state initiative from the state government perhaps to do that. As for more specialized learning, I think we have a great many programs already existing in this county, specialized learning. We have international baccalaureate at North High. We have the Avid Program at all the county high schools, and I do the Avid Program one day a week at Williamsport High School. In fact, I go tomorrow. We have the Barbara Ingram School where students can take many different things with fine arts, even in the individual high schools. We teach fine arts and so forth. So I don't know what else can be done. It seems to me that we're doing that. We got to look at perhaps what new programs can be added and so forth, what with the downtown hub and the added classroom space down there being built. So it's something to look at and see what happens.
Okay, thank you. And Mrs. Williams?
Well, if the question is how I would support those learning communities and create opportunities, obviously, that would be through the budget and through making sure that we have the right leaders in place for those programs, and to make sure that we have the right instructors in place for those programs, and to make sure that those programs have all of the essential equipment and tools that they need to be successful in the specialized learning that the students are undertaking. So that would be my answer in terms of how I would support it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bickford?
Yeah, I'm not sure I quite understand the question and if we're on the right track, but I agree with Mr. Stauffer that I think one of the benefits of this county is they've already done so much to address specific needs of children between Tech High School, between Barbara Ingram School for the Arts, between the Ag Program. So I can't imagine we're going to go backwards in that regard. I certainly wouldn't support that. So if we're continuing to try to find a student's strengths and the best way that we can put them in the right school that appeals to their strengths, let's keep doing it.
Thank you. We're going to move to response round 13 for Ms. Brightman, Mr. Martin, and Mr. Ridenhour. Beginning with Ms. Brightman. Do you favor preschool for all students? And if so, when do you see it being implemented in Washington County? And there's a note here, preschool, there's the number four in parentheses.
So I guess four years old start.
So I'm believing that's four years old.
Four years old, is that...
Some of the programs would start at three. I will tell you that I think we have a concern of taking this in step sequentially, and I would think we need to expand the needs-based preschool before we go to universal. I do think also that we have a lot of very high-quality private pre-K programs that we need to include as partners in this. It's a very, very expensive proposition to have universal pre-K, not only for the instructional aspect, but also the capacity. We don't have enough seat space right now for all of the additional children that would bring into this, to a program like that. So I think it needs to be a private-public partnership. We need to be sure it's high-quality. I would see getting funding. We don't even receive funding at this point for pre-K except through Title I.
Thank you. And Mr. Martin?
I do favor early learning. One of the problems we have, and I'm looking at a 2015 Cradle to Career Readiness Report Card that was done by the Greater Hagerstown Committee, and quite frankly, we have some issues here. I think it's a very good question. Obviously, we need to be looking at how do we encourage more readiness in students? My wife, as I said, is a Head Start teacher in Berkeley County. That's a wonderful program, and I think makes a big effort to get kids ready for learning in kindergarten and first through 12th grade. We need to look at expanding that program. Ms. Brightman is right. We do have issues right now with facilities. But this is where we need to be looking at the community at large and looking at how can we get working more with preschool providers, other community-based service providers, as well as looking at other funding sources to try to help kids, parents, and families make sure children are ready to learn when they enter kindergarten.
Thank you. Mr. Ridenhour?
Yes, Mrs. Brightman and Mr. Martin gave great answers, and I agree. I think all of us who serve on the board at this point in time, and this is something that comes up frequently, believe in early childhood or preschool, early childhood learning. It is a difficult proposition because it would be incredibly expensive in a variety of ways, programs as well as facilities. So as Mrs. Brightman mentioned, you know, working with the community, and Mr. Martin both stated, working with the community, trying to find ways to implement this without being, you know, overwhelmed with, you know, the financial burden is something that we have to work on together and slowly but surely put ourselves in a position that all of our, you know, four-year-olds going up are getting a head start, and a head start that they're going to need in the 21st century.
Thank you. Response round 14 moves on to Mrs. Williams, Mr. Bickford, and Ms. Brightman. Beginning with you, Mrs. Williams. This is sort of a two-part question, so I'll go slow. In order to get a firsthand account of what's going on in the schools, will you engage in school visits? What will you do on a visit? And will you meet with staff to observe a class, et cetera?
Okay, well, we have a certain protocol as a board member that we are expected to follow. I have made school visits in the past, and I am certainly open to making school visits following the protocol that's been established. And I am certainly open to meeting with staff as long as it's in keeping with the board's protocol.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Bickford?
Yeah, that's one of the things that excites me the most is talking to people. And I think one of the things, I definitely want to visit schools, and like you said, there is a protocol involved. But you also need to give people an opportunity to speak with you personally. Sometimes, you know, if you go as a school visit and you're the official school board member and you're there with the superintendent, people aren't necessarily going to come up with you with a gripe. So you need to open yourselves up to be available so that if people have an issue, if they have a complaint, they need to be comfortable to talk to you. One of the ways you do that, you know, you go to as many events as you can. You know, I know with many of our current school board members, their calendar in the spring is packed because they're everywhere. And I appreciate seeing that because it gives people an opportunity to come up and talk to them and say, "This is a problem." So, you know, basically, you get out there. One of the other things that somebody suggested to me was having listening sessions for feeder programs so that a school area where, you know, elementary school feeds into a middle school feeds into a high school. That's another idea we could look into.
Thank you. Ms. Brightman?
Thank you. Over the last four years, I've been working at Williamsport Elementary School with a fifth-grade class there and mentoring three different students in a STEM program and a capstone project. And in fact, I just met with this year's group about three weeks ago. And what that does for a board member is get you out of this situation and put a face to the policies and the budget, and it helps you connect. I don't come from education, I come from business, so, but I come from a science field. And so it's interesting to really spend an hour every so often with these students, see how the classroom and the teacher interacts, how technology is actually being a great force multiplier for these students. And when you sit down with a fifth-grade student and they have the level of knowledge on issues, it's very impressive what we're doing as a school system.
Thank you very much. Response round 15 goes to Mr. Martin, Mr. Ridenhour, and Mr. Stauffer. Beginning with you, Mr. Martin. What would you like to see done with the undesigned fund balance?
Well, I have heard in talking to people during the campaign that people feel there's a huge fund balance that the school board has. I serve on the board's Audit Committee. I've done that for a number of years since when I was City Finance Director. The school board does not have a large fund balance. I think it has prudently used those reserves to help its employees in supporting its health insurance fund. Recently, that enabled the employees to see less of an increase in their premiums in the current year than would have been necessary to keep that fund financially sufficient. It's also providing resources to help with commitments towards the downtown academic hub project and the overall urban partnership that we're going to hear more about later this week. And it is helping to support the working capital the school board needs to make sure that it can pay its bills every day and its employees every two weeks. The fund balance of the school board is really less than one week of operating reserves, which, when you think about it, really isn't a whole lot of money. It sounds like a lot because the board has a $300 million budget, but percentage-wise, it's one week of operating expenses.
Thank you. Moving to Mr. Ridenhour.
Mr. Martin made a good point. It is not this big slush fund that people tend to think it is. We build our budget off historic, looking at how much we, over a period of time, how much we need for each category. Some years, we don't use all of it, and it falls into the fund balance. And I've heard people say recently that, this year and recently, we should use it for raises, we should use it for class size. Those things are operating, and not only operating, but they are ongoing expenses. Ongoing expenses, if you don't have, if you have it this year from a fund balance, you may not have it from the fund balance the following year, so it has to come out of your budget, operating budget. And what happens there is you end up with a structural deficit like the state did when they started taking money from the transportation budget. It makes no sense to do that. You cannot use a fund balance for ongoing expenses. These are for one-time expenses or one-time that we, or one-time events that we can use to enhance the system in a variety of ways.
Thank you. Mr. Stauffer?
I would have much rather answered the last question. To be quite honest with you. No, but seriously, you know, I've heard, I've heard things that the surplus left over from the budget each year should be reported on the next year's budget as revenue and so forth. So, you know, this is an area which I'm going to have to do some studying about, but I think it can be used, put back in a budget and used for various things. One thing that always gets me about, I don't remember these large surpluses or fund balances, if you want to call them that, until Dr. Wilcox arrived here. Is that prudent management, stewardship of the budget? Perhaps so, perhaps not. I don't know. I do know this, I think we got to take a serious look at the budget. I don't know the last time it was rebased, but perhaps we need to take a look at that and see if, that we're putting the money to the right places.
All right, thank you very much. We're now moving on to response round 16, and this question is actually for everyone. We're going to start with Mr. Stauffer and go all the way back around to Mr. Ridenhour. And if you see me had to take a break and get a drink, because this question is a doozy, so.
Great.
Got everyone to smile, that's good. Okay. The candidates all answered a questionnaire from the teachers' union. It had over 20 questions on it. The union is holding those answers in confidence. Even union members have come to the union office to see the candidate answers. In the name of transparency, will you call on WCTA to release the candidate responses? If they won't, will you release your answers so that the public knows what promises might have been made in the endorsement process? Beginning with you, Mr. Stauffer.
Well, first of all, you know, it goes back to what I said earlier in the answer to another question. This is just a lie. This is the first I've heard this tonight, that these things have not been released and that people didn't see them and this and that and the other. So I don't know that that's a fact. I'll have to check that out, and I will check that out with Mr. Becker and so forth. I'll put it to you this way. I am not ashamed of anything that I put on that questionnaire, and in fact, what I stated about, on that questionnaire, I stated tonight about "fair share." That seems to be where it's going, and so forth. I know where the rumors coming from and all this. Let me say this. I don't get this hue and cry about, quote, "teachers' associations," or some people say "unions." We're talking about 1,500, I forget, about 1,500 members belong to the teachers' association. So when you criticize the teachers' association, you're criticizing your professional staff. And going back to what Mrs. Brightman said earlier, that's where we have a problem with trust. So I'll check this out and see what the situation is, but I will say things publicly that I put on that questionnaire.
All right, thank you. Moving on to Mrs. Williams.
Well, this is interesting to me, the way the rumor mill works. I'm in the back pocket supposedly of the teachers' union, and yet I'm actively working to have the union decertified. So I'm a very busy person this election cycle. I had no... I had no idea that the teachers' union was keeping these documents in confidence. That's news to me. And I have answered many questionnaires, and I would be happy to have anyone look at any response to any questionnaire that I've given this year, last year, whenever. So that's my answer.
Okay. Thank you very much. And back around to Mr. Bickford.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would assume that if the teachers, you know, the teachers' association wants to release it, they're, that's really up to them. They're an association. They can decide that. I have no problem. One of the pieces of advice that I got was to save every answer you've ever written because you get answered, you get asked the same question a lot, and it saves you time. So that's actually a good reminder that I should probably take the questions and place them on my Facebook page. So that's what, I'm glad they do that.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Brightman?
Yeah, and obviously, I brought this up earlier when I spoke about the lack of trust. And again, I think it's important to understand that the endorsement process is just handled with the leadership of WCTA in a room full of maybe six or seven individuals. So if you don't release the endorsement questionnaire, then the rest of the membership doesn't have a chance to see that. And I'm sure that WCTA supports transparency, and so I'm sure they would want to. And in fact, it says right on the cover that responses will be shared with our members. So I plan to put mine on my campaign website. I have them right here. And I think the citizens of Washington County and the membership should all have access to this.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Martin?
I'm a big believer in transparency. I think trust is essential. You don't have that if you're not willing to be open about what you're doing. I operated for 32 years in a glass house of local government, first as town manager in Hancock, and then 30 years with the city of Hagerstown as the finance director. I always looked to the public as being, having a right to know. And I looked at the newspaper and other news medias as being facilitators in helping the public. Quite frankly, the, as Ms. Brightman said, right at the bottom of the questionnaire, and I have my teachers' questionnaire this evening with me. It says, "The association reserves the right to make candidate responses to this questionnaire public, and that our responses will be shared with all the membership." I expected that when I answered these questions. I'm willing to put these, and will put these, my own answers on my Facebook page, and I would encourage them, if they haven't, to share these responses from all of us with all of their membership.
Thank you. And wrapping up this round is Mr. Ridenhour.
This is the easiest question he gave me, because I only have to use two, two words to do it, and that would be yes and yes. I'd be happy to share them if I can find them on my computer. And yes, I would have no problem with WCTA putting them out to all members and to anyone else they want to put them out to. Would be nice to see them so you could compare, you know, what did one member, what did one candidate say, what did another candidate say? Not only do you find out, you know, what the thought process, really try to figure out what the thought process was for the individuals making the endorsements, but also you get an idea of where your new colleagues or colleagues stand on certain issues. So it does help to know those things, particularly in a situation or in a group like this.
Thank you very much. Response around 17 is going to work the same way. This time, we're going to start with Mr. Ridenhour and go back all the way around to Mr. Martin. Beginning with you, Mr. Ridenhour. As the surge of heroin addiction spreads, what is the role of the school system to prevent children from becoming part of that epidemic?
Well, there are several things that we can do. I mean, education, obviously, we should educate our kids, you know, what are the dangers? How do you avoid it? We have to also work with our children to, to provide programs that keep them away from that situation. I, when I went to, I forget which, it was last fall, I believe it was, there was a program by one of the agencies or one of the drug prevention agencies where they talked about heroin addiction. It was, scared me to death. Not so much that there were so many people this, this was impacting, but how difficult it is once you start to stop. You know, if you are a heroin addict, after 10 years, you have a 75% chance of going back. You can be off it for 10 years and go back, 75% chance of going back. Takes 20 years before you go below 50% chance of going back. So I think it's one of those things that you, we have to teach our kids, to help them understand how dangerous this is and improve the, the community and atmosphere that allows a, you know, a drug problem to explode.
Thank you. Mr. Stauffer.
Well, I've been upset with the number of deaths in the county from overdoses and so forth. There have been, from what I understand, from former students, several students from Williamsport High School who have overdosed and, and died in recent times and so forth. One of the things I think it gets me is this fact that we take drug use so loosely. I don't like, for example, and I don't know if this is a gateway drug or not, but I don't like what society is doing with the idea of, let's legalize marijuana. It's no worse than alcohol and everything. Every person that I've known, and I knew several of them in the United States Army, five of them to be exact, every one of those five guys that were in the army because of, the judge gave them a choice, either the army or jail, they, they started on marijuana. So I think we have to have programs and things to keep them, keep them busy, keep them away from that and preaching. I think we need to set good examples about people sharing things that could be addictive and so forth, and especially doing it on the social media.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Williams?
Yes, I agree with Mr. Ridenhour. This is something that we need to be educating our students about, and definitely at an early age. I think we need to be addressing it through our curriculum. I think we need to have services available for students who, who are experimenting and those who are finding themselves addicted. And I think we need to have services available and counseling services for those students who are dealing with situations where their parents or family members are affected by the situation.
Thank you very much.
It's a very, very sad thing in our community.
Thank you very much. Moving back around to Mr. Bickford.
I grew up in the Nancy Reagan era of Just Say No, where we had drug dogs coming through our schools, searching our lockers. You know, we can talk about the effectiveness of the war on drug, but I do know that I appreciated when the dare officers would come because one thing, it gave you a chance to interact with police officers. I imagine that's still happening in some way, shape, or form, but it sounds to me like if this is, because this is such an issue, a pervasive issue in society, we do need to add more drug prevention education back into the curriculum.
Thank you. Ms. Brightman?
It's really kind of a sad commentary on our community that the Health Department has been dealing with this issue for many, many years. I serve on the Drug and Alcohol Local Council, and all of a sudden, once it became opioid use in the middle class or upper class, and once we had children that would, you would never expect to be experimenting with this level of opioid, did all of a sudden, did it become on the radar and everyone now is suddenly concerned about it? It's not a bad thing. What I'm saying is, this has been out there for a long time, and it's just starting to get noticed. And unfortunately, I think it's not just a K to 12 issue, it's an entire community issue. And this is one we need to work, have some lead through the Health Department and be very aggressive about early intervention, early identification, and training everyone in our school system as well.
Thank you. And Mr. Martin?
Erin, an opioid abuse is a community-wide problem. It spans all socioeconomic levels, and quite frankly, I think a lot of it comes from over prescription of painkillers for chronic pain. We need to all get smarter about what we're doing, but the school system has a role, much as it did with health education on sex ed, on smoking, on the dangers of alcohol abuse. We need to educate our students about the problems and challenges of opioid use. I recently, in January, took a seat on the hospital board, was elected, and it's a pervasive problem in our community. I didn't realize how bad the problem was until I started hearing statistics at our board meetings about how many emergency room visits we're having at our local hospital. It's a big problem, and much as we have a responsibility in the school system and our health ed, it need, this needs to be added to that agenda so that it's there with the other issues we're dealing with in early intervention.
Thank you. This is response around 18. It is going to be our last question before closing statements this evening. It is going to be a question for everyone. We're going to start with Mr. Bickford and go all the way down to Mrs. Williams. And this question is, Mr. Bickford?
Are you taking a drink beforehand? Is it a doozy?
It's a little long, so I'll try, go slowly through here. The Maryland State Department of Education lightened some disciplinary actions for students in recent years in an attempt to keep more students in school to get an education. How should the school system balance the need to educate students with the safety of those students?
So it's a discipline question. This is one of the things I'm looking forward to tackling because it was one of the most frustrating things as a parent, to see your child get bullied and go through that because, and see that the teachers have to deal with that, those disruptive students in their classrooms. I will say, when my daughter was bullied, the administration did a great job of handling it. You know, luckily, the people that bullied her did so electronically, which they do now, and so we had evidence that we could easily take into school. Discipline is a serious concern. I hear from teacher after teacher that says, that say that their classrooms are being disruptive by, by certain students. We've done, you know, we have Antietam Academy, we have programs in place, but one of the things that I plan to work on as a school board member is studying this issue more, getting the access that you get as a board member, and trying to see what other ways we can tackle this problem, because it's, it may be improving, but it's not going away.
Thank you. Ms. Brightman?
This discipline mandate that came down from the state with these Dear Colleague letters, and this has been probably about three years ago. We have lowered our out-of-school suspension rate. Certainly, we were headed in that direction prior to this, but what this, I would say to our classroom teachers that probably the discipline issue in the classroom is one of their largest concerns and complaints. Not only with students having a disruptive atmosphere, actually having teachers not knowing how to deal with disruptive students, and the new discipline regs really keeps us from using some of our tools that we once used with students, and I know Antietam Academy is one of those. I would like to see restorative justice become a real part of our go-to solution for this issue.
Thank you. Mr. Martin?
We certainly need to qualify or, you know, conform with state regulations, but we need to make sure our schools are safe, that students feel that they're not going to be bullied, that there are consequences for actions that occur in this classroom, and that people understand what those consequences are and that they're able to deal with those in a way that hopefully helps them modify and improve their behavior. None of us want to see disruptive kids in the classroom, but I think just outright expulsion or suspending them in a way is rewarding them for their bad behavior, if that's really what they're trying to do. So we need to find something else that works for them, that helps them redirect and modify their behavior, and at the same time, we're ensuring that our students feel safe and a constructive and nurturing learning environment.
Thank you. Mr. Ridenhour?
Thank you. I agree 100% with what Mrs. Brightman, Mr. Martin, and Mr. Bickford have said. It is, it is a problem. But throwing, as Mr. Martin just said, throwing them out of school isn't a solution anymore. I think we have to be creative. We have to look at different techniques and different programs that can help our children change their behavior. That's the ultimate goal. How can we help them change their behavior to a point that they can go into the classroom, a typical classroom, and not be disruptive? I saw an article the other day I thought was fascinating. It was a, a program in an inner-city school district that took the kids that were disruptive out of it and put them, believe it or not, in a yoga and meditation program. It was fascinating, and they have had tremendous success with this in utilizing it. So is that something that we can use? Maybe. I hope it is. But again, the, the big key is changing the behavior. Discipline, punishment, sometimes, it may work, may not. So we have to be creative.
Thank you. Mr. Stauffer?
Well, I would agree. Bullying is a problem, and throwing them out, you know, is something that needs to be dealt with. Throwing students out of school is not a solution. I've always thought it rewarded them for their behavior and so forth. We do have programs in place to deal with it. We have Antietam Academy, we have the Summit Program. I guess it's at several schools. I know it was at Williamsport High School. But as far as classroom discipline, I've always felt that the key to classroom discipline is the teacher. It's up to the teacher to establish, we'll call it discipline, but rules, expectations of behavior in the classroom and so forth. I never had a lot of sympathy for people, for teachers who complained about, how shall I say it, having problems in their classroom when they had never established anything, no format, no expectations for their students and everything. You've got to establish those things. That's the key to it. One other thing that I've run into on the campaign trail is I've had complaints from teachers about cellphone use and cellphone discipline. So I think that's something that needs to be looked at, perhaps.
Thank you. And Mrs. Williams?
Yes, I certainly am in agreement with everything that's been said. I, you know, it's important that we keep students in school. That's where the learning takes place, but every child should be in a safe learning environment. And, you know, it's, it's unfortunate that we have disruptive students, but we are fortunate in Washington County that we have programs and buildings like Antietam Academy, programs in our elementary schools that can help us deal with students that just cannot operate within a classroom. And Mr. Ridenhour is right. We need to be working with them, changing their behavior, and yet we need to hold students accountable for their actions because that's part of educating them to become productive citizens, so.
Thank you very much. Thank you to everyone. I do have a statement from WCTA that I've been asked to read. Earlier, we had a question about the Washington County Teachers Association's questionnaire for candidates. WCTA President Anil Becker is in the room tonight. He said the questionnaires are available to anyone who would like them. In fact, he said they will be provided to the Herald Mail, and when the Herald Mail receives them, they will be posted on the newspaper's website, harlemailmedia.com. And we are now moving on to our closing remarks. Each of our candidates are going to get 90 seconds. Kelly, are we good on that? Depending on how the evening went, I was going to have everyone spend their 90 seconds saying something nice about their opponent. No, I'm just kidding. We talked about the presidential debate earlier, so, but...
I think we've all been very nice to each other tonight.
I think so, too. So we're going to go in reverse alphabetical order, starting with Mrs. Williams. You have 90 seconds to make your closing remark. Kelly, are we good to go? Go ahead and begin.
Yes. Serving on your school board these past four years has been a privilege and a great responsibility, a responsibility that I've not taken lightly. I believe wholeheartedly in public education, and I've dedicated my life's work to children and their learning. I'm seeking reelection because I believe that I have a great deal to bring to the table at a time when public education in Washington County faces many challenges. Each and every child in our school system deserves the best, and I'm prepared to stand up for each and every one of them, to see that every student is prepared for the world in which he or she will live. I want to see that each student has the best possible teachers, curriculum, learning environment, and community support. I want them to learn, to experience success, and to continue to want to learn throughout their lifetime. Nothing I advocate for is for personal benefit. We all benefit for educating our children well. I'm running for reelection to your school board. Should I be reelected, I'll continue to listen to you, to work for you, and to answer to you. If you'd like to know more about my experience and my personal background, I hope you'll contact me or visit my website at electmelissawilliams.com. Thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for your consideration when you go to vote on November 8th.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mr. Stauffer?
I greatly appreciate the opportunity to participate in tonight's questioning. I greatly appreciate the opportunity to participate in tonight's questioning. Besides making decisions that will best benefit our students, our employees, and our taxpayers, one of the things that I want to work for, because I testified about it at the last board meeting, I'll strive to restore civility, integrity, and transparency to our Board of Education. Those are not idle words. One thing that gets me is where all the newspaper articles about all this stuff, I know, I'm a person of character, and I've had my character attacked in articles and stuff, and by people that I've never spoken to, they'll write articles and say things and so forth. I don't get that. That creates a problem. But to do that, restore integrity and transparency, means that other members must subscribe to that goal. As one incumbent board member stated in the spring Herald Mail Voters Guide, "What must be avoided is questioning the motives of those who disagree with another member's position." But actions speak louder than words. We must stay focused on the issues, class size, boiling, technology, park, academic standards, the budget. I could go on. Let's remember this. It's about the kids. It's about the students. That's why all of us are up here tonight, every one of us. And for 42 years, I spent 2/3 of my adult life working for students. In fact, there were times when I felt more at ease around a group of students than I do around adults in such a situation as this, and so forth. So, I hope to be able to continue to do that by being elected to the board, working for the students of this county.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stauffer. We're moving to Mr. Ridenhour.
Thank you. It's been my honor to serve the students and citizens of Washington County as a member of this board for the last 12 years. I definitely take this job seriously and do my best to be prepared at each and every meeting. In my 12-year tenure, I have missed just one business meeting and one executive session. And Mr. Zahn sitting there knows why I missed it. I believe that during my tenure, the system has made some impressive progress through difficult economic times in an ever-changing educational landscape. It's my hope that my record of progress as a member of this board gives the voters of Washington County the confidence to reelect me for another term. Thank you all for coming this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Mr. Martin.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening with all of you, and thank you for coming out to this candidate forum. I am excited to be running for the school board. I'm very thankful and appreciative of the opportunities I've been given. I'm a lifelong resident of Washington County. My family's home place, my father's home place, is here. It's been here for well over 100, 150 years. Ivy Hill Farm out at Smithburg and Ringgold. I grew up here and went to school and was fortunate through work study and a senatorial scholarship to go to a state college and get my degree in business and accounting. And I've been very thankful that I started in public accounting, but was able to find a wonderful career in public service, first in Hancock as town manager, and then with the city of Hagerstown as finance director. I've enjoyed that. It's been wonderful to serve, and I have stayed active in retirement now, continuing to serve on various nonprofit boards. I'm excited to be able to bring a financial perspective to the school system. I'm excited that we have wonderful teachers and educators on our board, but we need diverse talents as well. I think I'd bring those skill sets to the board and a vision for the future. I grew up in the '50s. Learning from the past and those wonderful experiences is great, but we need to look towards that future. I'm looking forward to driving or riding in my self-driving car and using technology. And we need to learn from the past, but have a vision for the future. That's where we're going, and that's where we need to be going as a system.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Ms. Brightman.
Thank you. This community's heard a lot about the fracturing board. And not to really go in a negative mode, but I think it's important that we understand what that's all about. You see that door right over here to my right? About a year and a half ago, I walked through that door, and there was Mike Esford sitting across the table from Clayton Wilcox. And Mike had his finger up in Clayton's face going, "Just one more vote. All we need is just one more vote." And Clayton said, "Mike, are you threatening me?" Mike said, "Just one more vote. All we need is one more vote." The board isn't fractured. The board is divided between a vision of where Washington County can go, and whether that's forward or backwards. And that's why I ran again, because I believe in Washington County. I believe what we can do as a community. I believe in the future. And one more vote can bring that all down. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brightman. Mr. Bickford.
Yeah, I will address that too. You know, one of the things that going out in the community, talking to people, there is a real concern, especially after the Herald Mail article that said clearly fractured. One of the reasons that I ran is because my mom always said I'd be a good diplomat. I have spoken to many of the candidates and met with them, and look forward to getting to know the board members. I won't make a decision until I've talked to everybody and found out their opinions. You know, some of the no votes, I'll say that, you know, certain no votes, like the people that voted against the Hub and got savaged for it, probably at the end of the day, the Hub project is better because they voted no. But at the same time, I don't like the discussion that there's 4-3, 4-3. I always say, if I'm on the board, don't label me as one thing or another. It'll be 3-3-1. But the other thing that I want to use my closing statements for is, I was talking to my daughter today, and I asked her how people were feeling about national politics. And she said a lot of her college students aren't voting. That's really concerning to me. So, I would just urge, I think, everybody in the room, I'm preaching to the choir, to say, "Go vote." But please, tell everybody, go to the polls. Even if you skip the presidential election because it's so negative, please vote in your local election. That's what really matters. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, candidates, everyone. Let's give them a round of applause. So, that brings us to the end this evening. Thank you again to the school system for hosting us. Thank you for joining us, to our audience, and thank you to our candidates.